We need your help. We're in some perilous times, times all around the world, and it could affect this United States. Even give our president wisdom and knowledge and understanding in the things and decisions that he must make, as well as giving our mayor of the city of Baldwin Park wisdom in how to make the decision along with the rest of the councilmen. And our school district, Lord, we truly need your divine hand upon our children in our school district, out in the streets, the playground, and the parks, Lord. And we just give you the thanks and we give you the glory for taking care of us here in the city of Baldwin Park. Amen.
Thank you. This point, I'll ask everyone to face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to say thank you for everyone that's here today, and also pray that hopefully there's a solution in Ferguson that's part of the United States. It's important for us to also hope for the best and that there's resolution there. Speedy, so at this point, council members wishing to... Yes, City Treasurer Maria Contreras.
I would like to close in memory of Mr. John R. Romney. He was a very active man. He served on the Board of School Administration as a school board member. He was also a planning commissioner here in the city, very involved man. He had the decisions to take care of the target area, so he solved that. And also, he served as a board member in the Valley County Water. That's it.
What's up? Yes, thank you. Alrighty, thank you very much. Anyone else at this point?
I would like to...
Yes, council member.
Not in recognition, but I would like to thank Manica Carrillo and his staff. I attended the senior fashion show this morning.
Oh, that's right.
It was Rio de Janeiro was the theme, and it was a lot of fun. They put a lot of work, and the people were very happy. Everybody was dancing. It was a lot of fun. Thank you very much for such a wonderful morning.
I just have also one more comment, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
I won't have a chance to say it later on today, but I want to thank Waste Management. I see that they're here. We have a community group, BP Rack, who has been very involved here in the city, really supporting our programs and doing such a great job, but our funding has ended, and so they may not be able to stay here and continue their work. So I just want to thank you because I know that you just offered a job to, I believe, four or five of them, so thank you for that. It's really important. I know that they don't need to get paid, and they would do it happily, but the fact that you offered a job is really commendable. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Want to also acknowledge Richard De La Torre, former council member, city of Los Angeles, sitting in the back. Thank you for being here. Thank you very much. Al La Torre, sorry about that. Alrighty, okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd just also like to mention that the state is in a stage one water emergency that has been declared, and it's important that we all do everything we can to conserve water, reduce washing your car, your grass, take shorter showers, do everything. This water drought is very serious, and it's impacting the whole state, and we really need to be cautious on how we use water and talk to our neighbors about it. I know my neighbor the other day was watering his grass, and there was a lot of water coming down the drain, and it's just, it's fresh water. I went to his door, knocked on it, and kind of reminded him about the drought, and he turned off his water. So I think it's important that we do that. Also, the city, our Public Works Department, you know, when our sprinklers are broken or water's leaking, that makes sure we get right on top of it and take care of it. Alright, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you very much. Real quick, Legal Council gave me something I need to read. This is required as government code, section 54954.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 attending the housing authority meeting, and $50 for attending the finance authority. So we're open up the housing and the finance concurrently. Thank you very much for that. Alright, at this point, we have various presentations, but the first one that we have, oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, Madam City Clerk, just testing you.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, City Treasurer. Thanks, council member.
Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco.
President.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. City Treasurer, City Treasurer, City Clerk's next to you. Alright, first one, real quick, just a little housekeeping. We don't allow anyone to come up to the actual diocese along these both areas unless called upon, so I just want to make that so that everyone knows. Alright, at this point, we're going to have the certificates presentations to the Baldwin Park Girls softball team for winning the 2014 Southern California Champions. So not certain, is Coach Tony Garcia here? No? How about Commissioner David Muse, a coach as well? Well, come up, why don't you go up to the lectern, David, and give us a little background, but I'll go ahead and read this in the meantime, which says, "Tonight, we are here to celebrate and recognize the Southern California Regional Champions Big League Softball Division. These 12 young ladies probably represent the community of Baldwin Park and Eastside Little League, becoming the district's 19 champions, sectional champions, and the Southern California Regional Champions. They made it all the way to the final bracket of the Western State Division, beating Arizona, Oregon, Washington, and Northern California, and were just two games away from going to the Little League Softball World Series for Big Leagues in Delaware, but lost in the final rounds. In fact, since they beat Northern California, you can say they are California State champs." That's right. Alrighty. "The entire community of Baldwin Park came together and raised over 3,000 donations to help cover the girls' lodging and meals while they were at the tournament. The parents, players, and entire Eastside Little League family would like to thank each and every person who helped make it possible, including council members and other community leaders. We thank you, ladies, for taking Eastside Little League farther than any other team from the community since the 1970s. I know that I will see you next year, knocking it out of the park to represent the Western Regional and next year World Series." So I want to thank you on behalf of the city Baldwin Park, and I don't know if the names are up on the marquee yet or not, Manny?
Yes.
Oh, the names are on the marquee already, and then we're also going to make sure that you're in the newsletter so that all 75,000 residents of Baldwin Parks are able to see and know about this league. So at this point, I'm going to give it over to Commissioner Muse.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
At this point, I'm not the commissioner, but a proud parent, a proud coach, a proud member of the community, and a proud member of Eastside Little League. I want to... This is the girls' night. This is, we're here to recognize them for their accomplishments, to go to Lancaster and deal with the heat, and deal with going up there, in some cases, back and forth a few nights, but it was a great opportunity, and like you said, Mayor, we will be knocking on the door for them next year because we will be... One of our goals for next year is to be going to the Little League World Series.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can I change hats for a minute?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. I was involved in Little League baseball for over 30 years.
Wow.
And at both the regional and national level. What these young ladies have achieved is truly amazing, because the Western region includes 13 states, and winning Southern California, you're looking at competing with approximately 400 leagues, little leagues.
Wow.
In that. And traditionally, the Southern California Champion Division is the toughest one to get through in the nation, and the fact that they finished second in the West probably makes them one of the top three to four teams really in the nation. So they have accomplished something truly remarkable and amazing, and went through what is generally considered the toughest division in the region in Little League softball.
Wow.
And they really should be commended for that achievement.
Awesome, thank you very much.
One of the things that makes us different when we competed was the fact that we represented Eastside Little League. We did not get college players, we did not go outside our league, but we did everything homegrown, so it was Eastside all the way.
Awesome. Alright, yes, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. David Muse. I'll decommission you for now. Alright, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask the, all the participants, as I call your name, to come up here to the diocese and we'll get a picture. The first one is Marisa De La Torre. Come on up here. Come on, here, okay. Estela Vazquez. Nelly Valencia. Rebecca Snook. Jaclyn Silva. Rebecca Cedillo. Stephanie Salcido. Chollet Robledo. Melissa Reyes. Angelica Ochoa. Oh, Taylor Muse, come on up here, girl. Okay, there you go, there you go. And then we also have the Team Mom, we have Terry Muse. Coach Tony Garcia is not present. Then we have David Muse, the manager Baldwin Park, okay? And then we also have Coach Steve Rivera, is he here?
No. Can you do a good mic? Okay.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, you're not the coach.
Okay.
Let's move on down. We're going to make our way right down.
Oh, yeah, let's go on down here, you guys.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
A little bit tighter?
Yes.
Pictures, please, on two.
Pictures, please, on two.
Thank you very much. You know what, we need one separate, so for the actual...
I'm going to see if I can...
I mean, the tribute in the city.
We're going to take about 10 of them, alright? About 10, okay? That's because they say macaroni and...
Okay. Camera right over here. Do we have a clean camera? Okay, count three, one, two, hold it.
Down there?
There you go.
You want to say...
We're going to do Turellis.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, down there? Oh, yes. The cancer one is that?
Oh, yeah. Ricardo's, Ricardo's going to read it. Oh, yeah, you want to leave camera?
Okay. There we go. Everyone knows Magda.
I don't.
I got to wear glasses on it, so... Okay, so at this point, we're going to do, as we're here into office, I'm going to go ahead and ask you that you raise your right hand. I, say your name.
I am Madre Turellis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well?
That I will, or well?
Well, will, well.
Okay, both.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
I am about to enter again.
Got it, yeah. Congratulations, councilman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you all. Thank you for your vote of confidence.
Real quick, just let me say, she could...
Yes, sir, by all means.
Let her, she's also a former military veteran, so could you give us a little background about your military?
Uh, yeah, this thing will shut up, sorry.
Okay.
I did shut it off, though. Um, yes, I was in the Navy back in 1974. I left Brooklyn, New York to become a machine repairman. I was the first female machinist in the Navy. I worked aboard USS ships fixing submarines, and also I worked at Naval Air Station Miramar, that's where they filmed Top Gun fixing those F-14 planes. Stayed there five years active, 16 reserve, got out of there, then became a federal agent for Homeland Security, and now that I've retired, I'm part of Baldwin Park as your housing commissioner, which is fantastic job, and I wouldn't sign up for it every year if it wasn't that I really love the job that I'm doing, so, well, thank you for your vote.
You know what, you're not, picture first. Come on in, everyone, let's get over here.
Hold on. Is that her phone? Oh, something like that.
Ooh, sorry, Monica, here. Magda, let me have you stand this real quick.
Oh, definitely. Folks, we need you.
Where's our city? Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Is this, is this the one that we keep or she keeps?
Alrighty, something for mommy to collect.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to have Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, who's going to read off a proclamation. You want to bring it down, or you would do it from up there?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do it from up there. You'll do it from down here?
Yes. Oh, we're going down there? Anybody to receive it or register?
Okay, at this point, I'm going to have Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco present a proclamation, which is for the, not certain, the childhood cancer awareness. Is anyone here to pick the actual proclamation? If not, we'll go ahead and place it at the...
Okay, this is a proclamation for the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month for September 2014, where systematic lupus, commonly known as lupus, is an acute, chronic, complex, and often life-threatening immune disease. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report, cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among US children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in more than 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year. Whereas founded over 20 years ago by Stephen Feinstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated and Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provided a variety of vital patient psychological services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital Los Angeles, the City of Hope, Mattel Children's Hospital at UCLA, LA County USC Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kid recognition award ceremony and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, Manuel Lozano, Mayor of the city of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco, and council members Cruz Baca, Monica Garcia, Susan Rubio, City Treasurer Maria Contreras, and the City Clerk Alejandra Avila, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city of Baldwin Park.
Thank you. I'm going to pray, Monica. Alright. While the mayor gets back, I also want to thank the parents and everyone that helped make it possible for these young ladies to be here and to receive the award that they did in the championship. It takes a lot of people and a lot of effort to drive you back and forth, and thank you very much, Terry, and of course, David, and your coaches, both at the high school and at Eastside. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. I want to also give an opportunity to a business in Baldwin Park, which is the Smile Journal, so we have with us today, we have Wanda Edelman, so if she could step up here and give us coverage on this. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Wanda Edelman from Total Care Dental and Orthodontics.
Yeah, let me bring the mic closer to you, thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you, Mark.
Wanda Edelman from Total Care Dental and Orthodontics in Baldwin Park. We are a multi-specialty dental office. Last year, I mailed you a letter similar to the one you have in your hand. I was pregnant, I wanted for you to help proclaim October as National Orthodontic Health Month. I ended up going earlier on maternity leave, so I didn't see it follow through.
Okay.
Actually, National Orthodontic Health Month is from the American Association of Orthodontists. We, as a dental office, participate in all of the community events. We like to give back to the community.
True.
We know we don't have the Easter hunt anymore. We used to donate gifts and toys for that. This National Orthodontic Health Month is something good for the kids. They go trick-or-treating, they get all this candy, and the parents end up hiding it. So what we want to do is, for every pound that they surrender to our office, we will donate $2 to the kids, $1 to a favorite charity, and the other dollar goes to the child. It is easier, if you proclaim it, get the word out there, and it is actually something good for the kids and the community. So that is why I'm here today.
Thank you. Yeah, what we could do is also provide you access on our actual city newsletter, so this way you're able to reach out to all the residents in Baldwin Park. This is important.
Totally appreciate that, and it is important. It prevents decay, it prevents a lot of health, you know, dental problems, it's all related to your health, so I, we would really, really appreciate that.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for the blessing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, and I think I have a gift for everybody.
Sure. Thank you very much. Alright, at this point, I'm going to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name, you have approximately three minutes. I forget also, real quick, just acknowledge the, one of the Valley County Water District Board Member, we have Mariana Lake to the left, and also just walked in, Mr. Paul Hernandez.
Al Contreras.
And, oh, is Al Contreras here?
No, he's babysitting.
Oh, he's babysitting, okay, alright. Alright, thank you very much, Terry Muse. And thank you, Ms. Edelman.
I'm going to take off my Team Mom hat and put on my Waste Management hat, since Council Member Susan Rubio brought up the project that we're undertaking with the California Center for Public Health Advocacy, I thought I could take this opportunity to let the community know. The city of Baldwin Park is undertaking a very needed program, offering recycling to businesses as part of their trash service. So rather than just implement the program unilaterally and not really address the needs of the businesses, we're working with the California Center for Public Health Advocacy to have some recycling ambassadors. It's actually going to be six residents from Baldwin Park, who, many part of the healthy eating active community, some of them are here in the audience, I think, that businesses are familiar with. They've been working with the businesses to develop all the healthy corner store projects and the healthy eating projects, so they will be working with us to actually go out to businesses and to do, we call them, waste audits. Help businesses figure out what can be recyclable and how they can reduce their trash service, save money by recycling. So we're very excited to have them, they're going to be a tremendous asset to the community, and you know, what better group to work with than those from our own city who know the communities well and patronize these businesses, and, you know, we think the business will really feel that it's a community-based project, so that's, tomorrow, we're actually going to do training with them, we're very excited, so I'm sure you'll be hearing more from them in the future, and I just want to let you know that, you know, any way that we can be a partner in the community, that's our goal at Waste Management. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, moving along with public communication.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
City Council, congratulate the girls, first of all, for a great, great win. How did you ever beat another California team? They're all good. Now, don't forget that we did have a championship team 10 years ago from Baldwin Park, they went all the way to New York, the Titans, and they came in second for the, it was a majors' end at the time, that was 10 years ago, and I think Carrillo, I don't know who was in charge there, but it was the majors, that they came in second in New York, and it's very hard to beat a California team, I'll tell you that.
Congratulations.
Second, oh, this is for roads, or the, I want to bring the subject over on the south side of Baldwin Park, over where Fraser and Garvey meet. There's an off-ramp from the freeway that dumps into Fraser, and I almost got hit coming in eastbound, because the people that were coming out the freeway, they think that's a one-way, and there's no lines in the middle, and they just come around to try and beat the traffic and get back on, and so what I did, I parked there for two or three days, different days, watching the traffic, and sure enough, every day, they make the same mistake, they go right on back on the freeway, and people coming from the opposite way are going to get hit. One of those days, there's going to be a terrible accident there, so could somebody look into it?
Now, where's that location?
Right, where Fraser and Garvey come off together, they meet together, and there's an off-ramp, there's two ramps that dump into Fraser, it's really a Baldwin Park street, there's no middle line there that tells you it's a one-way, or nobody knows, and they just continue going on that one lane, and sure enough, you know, it's going to be an accident. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Alright, moving along with public communication, anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, come on up here, sir.
Good evening. Here are another reason, but one of my primary concerns about the city of Baldwin Park is what I feel is a lack of communication to the residents. Events that are going on, for instance, I've lived here 30 years, I didn't know that these wonderful girls were even competing. You've mentioned the city newsletter?
Yes.
Is that what it's called in Baldwin Park now?
Yes, that's correct.
I was pregnant. I wanted for you to help proclaim October as National Orthodontic Health Month. I ended up going earlier on maternity leave, so I didn't see it follow through. Actually, National Orthodontic Health Month is from the American Association of Orthodontists. We, as a dental office, participate in all of the community events. We like to give back to the community. We know we don't have the Easter hunt anymore. We used to donate gifts and toys for that. This National Orthodontic Health Month is something good for the kids. They go trick or treating. They get all this candy and the parents end up hiding it. So what we want to do is for every pound that they surrender to our office, we will donate $2 to the kids, a dollar to a favorite charity, and the other dollar goes to the child. It is easier if you proclaim it, get the word out there. And it is actually something good for the kids and the community. But that is why I'm here today.
Thank you. Yeah, what we could do is also provide you access on our actual city newsletter. So this way you're able to reach out all the residents in Baldwin Park. This is important.
Totally appreciate that. And it is important. It prevents decay. It prevents a lot of health, you know, dental problems. It's all related to your health. So I, we would really, really appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for the message.
Thank you for your time.
All right.
Oh, and I think I have a gift for everybody.
Sure. Thank you very much. All right. At this point, I'm going to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. You have approximately three minutes. I forget also real quick, just acknowledge the, one of the Valley County Water District Board Member. We have Mariana Lake to the left, and also just walked in Mr. Paul Hernandez.
Al Contreras.
And oh, is Al Contreras here?
No, he's babysitting.
Oh, he's babysitting. Okay, all right. All right. Thank you very much, Terry Muse. And thank you, Ms. Edelman.
I'm going to take off my Teen Mom hat and put on my Waste Management hat. Since Councilmember Susan Rubio brought up the project that we're undertaking with the California Center for Public Health Advocacy, I thought I could take this opportunity to let the community know. The City of Baldwin Park is undertaking a very needed program, offering recycling to businesses as part of their trash service. So rather than just implement the program unilaterally and not really address the needs of the businesses, we're working with the California Center for Public Health Advocacy to have some recycling ambassadors. It's actually going to be six residents from Baldwin Park, who many part of the healthy eating active community, some of them are here in the audience, I think, that businesses are familiar with. They've been working with the businesses to develop all the healthy corner store projects and the healthy eating projects. So they will be working with us to actually go out to businesses and to do, we call them, waste audits. Help businesses figure out what can be recyclable and how they can reduce their trash service, save money by recycling. So we're very excited to have them. They're going to be a tremendous asset to the community. And you know, what better group to work with than those from our own city who know the communities well and patronize these businesses? And you know, we think the business will really feel that it's a community-based project. So that's tomorrow, we're actually going to do training with them. We're very excited. So I'm sure you'll be hearing more from them in the future. And I just want to let you know that, you know, any way that we can be a partner in the community, that's our goal at Waste Management. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, move along with public communication.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. And congratulate the girls first of all for a great, great win. How did you ever beat another California team? They're all good. Don't forget that we did have a championship team 10 years ago from Baldwin Park. They went all the way to New York, the Titans. And they came in second for the, it was a major's end at the time. That was 10 years ago. And I think Correa, I don't know who was in charge there, but it was the majors that they came in second in New York. And it's very hard to beat a California team, I'll tell you that. Congratulations. Second, oh, this is for roads or the, I want to pick a subject over on the south side of Baldwin Park over where Fraser and Garvey meet. There's an off-ramp from the freeway that dumps into Fraser. And I almost got hit coming in eastbound because the people that were coming out the freeway, they think that's a one-way. There's no lines in the middle. And they just come around to try and beat the traffic and get back on. And so what I did, I parked there for two or three days, different days watching the traffic. And sure enough, every day they make the same mistake. They go right on back on the freeway. People coming from the opposite way are going to get hit. One of those days, there's going to be a horrible accident there. So could somebody look into it?
Now, where's that location?
Right, where Fraser and Garvey come off together, they meet together. There's an off-ramp. There's two ramps that dump into Fraser. It's really a Baldwin Park street. There's no middle line there that tells you it's a one-way or... Nobody knows. And they just continue going on that one lane. Sure enough, you know, it's going to be an accident. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, move along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, come on up here, sir.
Good evening. Here are another reason, but one of my primary concerns about the city of Baldwin Park is what I feel is a lack of communication to the residents. Events that are going on, for instance, I've lived here 30 years. I didn't know that these wonderful girls were even competing. You've mentioned the city newsletter?
Yes.
Is that what it's called at Baldwin Park now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is there any way to expand that to where it could be more often? By the way, thank you very much for putting the article in there about the street sweeping. That was appreciated. The other day, along with the comments from this gentleman, I turned left on a street that I normally take every single day, go for four or five blocks before realizing that there was a road closed sign. It would have helped if I had had it like four or five blocks earlier saying, "Road closed ahead." When there's things like parades, functions, of course, the streets are going to be closed. It should be understood. But you know, maybe a little bit better communication. The Baldwin Park newsletter, I feel, is a great publication, but it does need to be done more often. Maybe not so fancy, maybe not so pretty. Maybe just plain black and white and say, "Hey folks, this is what we're doing now." That's just a suggestion. I actually came here with an interest in the farmer's market, but that I'll hope to listen to.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. And just to let you know, we used to print the actual, now monthly, but because of budget cuts, we just kind of went outside. But you can go on the website to get additional information.
I realize that, but my mom doesn't have a computer.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, move along with public communication.
I was reading that article. My name is John Reyes. Item number four, we're going back into that buddy system again. You know, awarding contracts without giving other companies the opportunity. It's supposed to be a close bid, and it's supposed to be open. I think the city manager, and then he'll bring it up. You know, because a lot of the citizens from Baldwin Park are a little upset because they heard that you're going to give the contract again to Royal Coach. Because there was too many little incidents where their tools were taken off and they couldn't find them. They were sold down the street on a restaurant. So I think maybe we could get a second company and let the citizen say, okay, I want road or whatever company come to my car, my truck or whatever. But the buddy system, it's just very strange that there was another bid. Then Royal Coach came later and put it down. You know, the worst part of it is that anything that happens in City Hall, we know within the day. Okay? So we want something that's going to be straight. Let's get two companies in here. What one is going to do, let the other one do the same thing. Okay? The thing about that buddy system, yeah, I'm going to give you $20,000 for your reelection or whatever. $10 or whatever, you know. We need to get away from that buddy system. Okay? But you guys have to understand that everything that happens in the city, we know. Everything. Okay? Let's get together and do the right thing. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Reyes. Appreciate that. Okay, move along with public communication.
Good evening. Greg Tuttle, business owner. First, I'd like to straighten out a few things that Monica was really fuzzy on at the last meeting when she was trying to explain how they doctored the books up. Her explanation of how they afforded, couldn't afford the police was you doctor the numbers of the police officers. You add more number. That way you get a higher budget. And that's what you had your ex-police chief do, did. And that's why she's not here anymore. And you had a city manager did the same thing, cook the books. And then you had a financial advisor, the manager, she got kicked out too because she left. Because she knew what she was doing was illegal. So you guys all got caught. You made up this fictitious number of the police officers so that you wouldn't have a budget. For two years, you couldn't even get a budget on time. You never did explain how you guys could that. You were so confused. Now then, let's get back to the two years. Okay, I'm going to go into the 1290. I want to thank Cruz Baca, Susan Rubio, and Ricardo Pacheco. We finally got something done that our mayor lied to us since day one after Bisno left town, that he was going to take care of 1290. We had three council members that are actually interested, and we have Amy and Mark to think also. They did a heck of a job coming to meetings and meeting with citizens and seeing that 1290 is no longer good for this community. And I hope to see that tonight. And I appreciate everybody that came out in the council and everybody, your help. They did a great job. But we didn't see Manny and Monica there. And Manny promised it. That was going away. Now then, on line item eight, agenda, this needs to be pulled. This is a stupid project of spending $20,000 of city money to go out and revamp the speed signs in the city. Now, why don't we ask the police officers how many radar tickets that they write in the city? You'll find it's very, very few. Because I did ask. Why are we spending $20,000? We might as well let, if somebody's got a sharp attorney and he knows our signs haven't been reviewed in five years, why are we spending $20,000 for this? We don't need to be pissing our city money away. We need to be saving it. And this is a pure piss money way, and we need to stop this kind of thing going on. We need to look into these kind of things that come up, and it shouldn't even have been on the agenda. People need to look, this was staff wasted time that we could have been doing, making profitable business for the city, but staff wasted time doing this. This stuff has to stop. And I hope with our new city manager that he can get a hold on this and see this stuff before it comes in. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, move along with public communication. See no further interest. And now, oh, you coming up? Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm here as a resident, as a member of the BP REC, which is Resident Advisor Committee, as well as a parent of two. I'm here to support the item number five, healthy corner store policy. This policy has evolved from our healthy selection program. I believe that this policy is benefit, will benefit our families to have another tool to make better choices. It also will benefit our wonderful businesses to have more of our residents stay in the city and shop. I also support the progress step, progress in this, I support this aggressive step in creating a healthier Baldwin Park. I ask for your support and yes, vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, move along with public communication.
Good night, everyone. I'm Claudia Pila. We're here to support item five, asking your support to follow the work we have been doing for the last almost seven years that good because for the community to have more access for healthy eating. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, at this point, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public communication. All right, thank you. Real quick, just to let everyone know, the gentleman that came up here obviously did whatever he said here. Want to let everyone know that anyone could come up here and fabricate any type of statement up here. You could outright lie and the California, or I should say, the Constitution itself protects you, freedom of speech. So you can make up anything, accuse anyone here of anything. What he won't mention to you is that we ended up with a $6 million reserve. So I want to let everyone know that. He's a business owner here. Doesn't live here, but he has a vested interest, and I respect him for that. But I think what needs to be clarified so that everyone knows across the board that again, anyone could come up here and say anything they want. And this person takes the Academy Award most of the time. So just want to let everyone know. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and move on. We have a consent calendar, items one through, one through eight.
Mayor of...
Yes. Okay, sir. Oh, one through nine. Excuse me, council member Cruz Baca corrected me, so we have nine as well.
Okay, I wanted to pull nine and five, please.
Okay, nine and five.
And I'm going to pull four and eight.
Okay, four and eight.
And number three, I'm sorry. Three, four, and eight.
Okay, three, four, and eight. All righty.
Approval of items that were not pulled, which is I think one, two...
Or with the exception of the ones that have been pulled.
Right.
So that's three, four, five, and eight.
Right.
And nine as well. All right, so there's a motion by Vice Mayor. I'll second.
Item nine was pulled, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So at this point, are any objections? See none. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and go through...
Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
For the record, you motioned and who seconded that?
No, the motion was Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. I second it, and there was no objections.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so at this point, item number three, which is the official police toll service franchise. It is recommended that the city council, one approved. So who's bringing this one up?
I did.
Oh, excuse me, Cruz Baca. Yes, ma'am.
Well, three and four are basically the same.
Yes.
Considered the same. They're not, but... And I would like to be able to discuss and review a little further, please. And could we bring it back to the second council meeting in September?
Counsel, okay, is there, are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, there's no second, so that drops for the lack of, for the lack of a second vote. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of the official police toll service franchise. And that's for approximately, am I correct, 10 years? Excuse me, four-year contract. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
Second. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, item number four, which is a resolution number 2014-030, amending the official police tolling franchise agreement fee, and that is also part of it. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, anyone have, yeah, excuse me, Councilmember Cruz Baca, you pulled that as well?
Yes, I did. And I want to bring, I still want to bring it to the second meeting in September. I need to review and to look at our options. I'm getting a lot of phone calls from different residents, and I would really like to consider that.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion on, there's a motion on table to bring back item number four, which reads the resolution number 2014-030, amending the official police tolling franchise, franchise agreement fee. So there is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Madam City Clerk, roll call.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're not?
Baca, what is your...
Okay, so the motion, the motion is for it to go back so that Councilmember Cruz Baca could review. So that's the motion.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, so at this point, let me go ahead and go back. So at this point, there's a motion, there's a motion on the table for Councilmember Cruz Baca to pull item number four, reading resolution number 2014-030, amending the official police tolling franchise agreement. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, madam, okay, there's a second by Councilmember Susan Rubio. At this point, Madam City Clerk will go ahead and take roll call.
That was for the franchise fee.
Yes, for the franchise fee.
To clarify, because it got confused, confusing there.
Yeah, this is...
Confusing from three and four.
Right.
What is...
Where if I would four is.
For the record, right now, we are motioning for Cruz Baca to pull item number four. It was second by Ms. Rubio, and we will do roll call, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay, may I ask, what, you're saying that number four is confusing?
Because it's, it's sort of blended in with three, and it's two separate. They're, they're basically about the tolling, but they're two separate issues.
When's the franchise?
She wants to bring it back in September just to review the franchise fees.
That's correct. Okay, all right, so at this point, so at this point, okay, there was a second, and I asked for Madam City Clerk roll call, so...
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
That's fine. We can discuss it. Yes.
Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Manuel Lozano, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, so at this, yeah, so at this...
But may I ask, what is, what is the impact to the other contract? Or how do they work with the other?
We're just going to hold this up till September. We're going to bring it back in September.
And that will be for the second meeting in September, correct?
The second meeting in September. So real quick, hold on, Madam City Clerk. So at this point, the vote is 5-0.
5-0 to bring it back.
Per the request of Councilmember Cruz Baca. And it was seconded by Councilmember Susan Rubio. So at this point, it will be placed on the calendar for the second meeting in September.
Correct, correct.
Legal counsel?
And Mr. Mayor, that was only item four, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Only item four. So item three, which has been voted on, the official police toll service franchise. So this is for further, further information for Councilmember Cruz Baca and of course, the 5-0 vote. So I'm going to move on to the next. Madam City Clerk, got that?
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The next one, the item number five, which is the approval of the administrated policy number 29 entitled Healthy Corner Store Policy. Who pulled this item?
I did.
Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take the opportunity to discuss a little bit of, you know, what this policy entails. I know that BP REC, along with the organization, has been working really hard on this. And I just want to take the time to thank each and every one of you. I did me with them. And we discussed all the good things that they're going to be doing with our markets. And they're trying to provide incentives for stores to go healthier and want to have healthier options for our community. But also, I want to take the time because I know once, I think I mentioned it before, their grant is running out, and we won't have an opportunity to thank Cristina Cardenas and Adan Duardi. And I want to just bring them back at another meeting and recognize them for their work. They will no longer be here in Baldwin Park. From what I understand, they're going to be working out of LA County. And so they've been here for so many years that I think it's appropriate for us to recognize them for all the years of service. I mean, I feel like they're part of the organization already. So we can invite them to come back so they can be recognized. From what I understand, I mean, the residents, they say they're part of our, you know, our city. And thank you very much. And like I said, I do appreciate Waste Management offering some jobs for you guys to stay. But again, so hopefully you guys will agree with the recognition that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Susan Rubio. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and make a motion. You want to make a motion for item number five?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, number eight, which is the amendment to agreement for professional services engineering and traffic speed survey. And I believe Councilmember Cruz Baca pulled that item?
Yes, and I need to continue my discussion with Mr. Wall. We basically touched on some of the things that need to be done. I don't want it to be redundant, and I need some clarification.
So you want to pull it? You want to make a motion?
I want to make a motion.
Oh, Mayor, just for the discussion, I know she's making a motion, but discussion before your motion is...
Go ahead, that's fine, that's fine.
The, the staff reports indicates that the service must be updated every five years to ensure the speeds reflect current condition. These provisions assure that posted speed limits are kept reasonable current. The Police Department has requested the engineering and traffic surveys be updated to comply with California Vehicle Code. So this is a state law that we have to comply with. It's done every, every five years. It's just, it's a practice that is done here. So I know there was a comment made by one of our residents about the study. It is a required study. It's not just the study done just because we want to spend $20,000. But I just like to, Dan, can you add some light a little bit more to what this study is needed for?
Yes, the, the reason, the reason why the Police Department requested this is that without this, they're unable to use radar enforcement. Also, this is done to ensure that our speed limits are set at the, at the reasonable, at a reasonable speed based on current traffic flows. Again, that's not just for enforcement, but it's also for safety.
Mr. Wall, I have just a clarifying question. So what is the impact, just to move it from this meeting to the next meeting? Is there any?
It's, it's, no.
So there's no impact. So I would second the motion just so she has an opportunity to discuss it and ask more clarifying questions. I would second that motion.
All right, okay, so it's been a motion by, by Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Mayor, just let me just add that...
Discussion?
Well, just last, last note here is that when someone challenges a speeding ticket and they always look for a study to, to back it up, and if your study is outdated, then your tickets become invalidated. So that's the risk that we want. I mean, it's not going to happen by holding it back a meeting, but if it continues to not be done, that's the risk that we run as a city. That's the liability that we have. Thank you.
I, I understand. I really do. I understand.
So you're, okay, hold on. So you're, Vice Mayor, so you're not objecting?
No, no.
Okay, all right. All right, so it's motion, second, and there was no objections, so move. All right, so move forward.
So just for the record, Ms. Baca motion and Ms. Rubio second.
Second, that's correct.
To bring back to the first or the second meeting of September?
It would be the second meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we'll go to item number nine, which is the proposed downtown street market. So at this point, Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is something that I proposed last council meeting, and we've been working really hard. We had a little committee just, you know, trying to see how we can make sure that this is successful. And I want to thank Manny Creo, because we do have a map of the proposed street market and where it's going to be. I just have a couple of suggestions. Mr. Creo, if we can move, I see where the stage is, is right off of the Park Plaza exit. I would like to suggest we push it back a little to include the taco restaurant, so we're not blocking it. Just a little further back. I would say closer to Palm Avenue, not too far back. I just feel if the stage is in front of the taco place, then it'll block that business from capturing on the, on the walkability in that area. Also, I, I was informed after, there's a lot of events happening that Thursday that we suggested we start the market. So I want to propose that we move it a week. Let me see. I think we had proposed September 18, 25, and October 2. If we can start on the 25th, October 2, and October 9. I had already discussed it with Mr. Creo, and it would give us an opportunity to continue to fundraise. When I see staff reports like this, and I always say it out loud, you know, it says right here that there's a cost of $16,340. As a council member, I would object, and I'm sure as a resident, you probably would too. But I just want to clarify some of the items. It is $16,340 for three weeks. However, we do have a grant, I'm sorry, some Business Improvement Fund that we can use, which is $7,000, which leaves us with $9,000. We have a couple of thousand already committed from businesses that want to participate and, and sponsor. So our goal is that by the time this gets going, we will have everything paid through the business and other supporters. And that's, and with that, I'll motion, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes, council members, hold on, Monica Garcia?
Oh, did you have something to say? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I am, I just wanted to express some concerns with the location of this farmer's market in closing down one of our major streets on Main, between Ramona and Palm, I believe. And I'm not going to oppose it, because I know that it's something that, you know, different people in our community have talked about, you know, bringing to our community. But if we could consider a location, an alternative location, that won't have the traffic, you know, impacts, such as the vacant lot that would basically be in the same area. It's just it runs adjacent to the proposed location. Or even consider the superior mark, you know, the, the Superior Market parking lot. And again, it's, it's mostly for the, you know, traffic. And we, we have still a positive event every year with the 5K, but we do get a lot of complaints, you know, for people trying to, to, you know, get in and out of the city and so forth. So I would just be concerned that, you know, that could be, pose a challenge. And some public safety issues too, perhaps. You know, make sure that if we do go with this location, that it's just barricaded very heavily, and, you know, there's a very strong presence to block any, you know, vehicles from, from coming into the area. I mean, you've seen that even with Santa Monica, and so they take major precautions now. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, I would like to suggest that we could have a, a study session. I'd like to look at the cost a little more and what we're, we're actually doing here. Because I know there's funds from the, well, if we don't have all the funds yet, I would like to get to a point where we have all the funds, and then we can continue to, through, through the project. Because, you know, if you don't have all the money yet, you can't really continue to, to approve a budget that you don't have. And then I'm not sure how much is, the fund that we are getting, the $7,000 funds, I guess. How much do we have in that fund?
We have approximately $220,000.
Okay.
So $7,000 of it will go, and remember, it's three weeks. And Councilmember Rubio is, is really working very, very hard to fundraise. I mean, some of the money has already been raised. So it's, it's not going to come out of the general fund. We're making sure of that.
And if I can just clarify, I just want to answer everyone's concerns. To Monica Garcia, thank you for, for your suggestions. The reason we want to have a farmer's market is, the purpose is not, you know, to consider like the Superior Market. I would feel it would be a promotion to their business. When in reality, what we want to do is promote everyone's business. We want to bring excitement to the downtown area. Sometimes when we do have it in parking lots, it's not visible. And our hope is that people will take notice, will start paying attention. I know there's a restaurant in the corner, there's a hamburger place. And we want people to get excited about coming to our community and really motivate businesses to really want to come into Baldwin Park. There's a lot of vacant properties there and a lot of space available in the Superior Market. So we want to make sure that people know that it is a vibrant city, and we are inviting the community and businesses together. That's the reason we chose the Business Improvement Fund, because essentially, what we want to do is promote everyone's business. It's been a little while since I think we've seen that Baldwin Park has been a little sad in terms of, you know, walkability. And we will take all the precautions that, that are necessary. Trust me, safety is number one. But in terms of the space, it really is probably less than a block. And I know that I've heard complaints about the 5K run. But when we do the 5K run, we really block all the residential. I mean, I saw it firsthand when there was a lady trying to get out of her driveway to go to work, and she was being blocked, and she was very upset. The area we're proposing is right in the downtown area, so it's not blocking any homes. It is blocking, it's actually not blocking anything. It is just in front of the businesses. And it is a block, so when I walked around that area, there's always ways of getting around to, to the main streets. And so with that, I just want to assure everyone that it will be a safe environment. In terms of funding, it's something that we want to get going, and if we waited, then it would really kill the opportunity, if you will, because we already need to have the vendors in place. We need to have everything in place for it to work on these states. If we wait a little longer, then you get into a little bit of a bad weather. You know, it's unpredictable. You don't know. We don't want to start having it when it rains. And so I think this is just a good way of having families come out when it's still beautiful and able to walk. And so I really hope that we can support this. Like I said, we already have a lot of money committed. Yes, it's committed. We don't have it in hand. But I can assure you that by the time this project happens, we hope to have everything paid for through sponsors. And we have a lot of great companies that are always sponsoring and willing to participate. So once again, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think it's great. I'm looking forward to buy aguacate and everything else they have there. So let's, let's kick that off. All right, so that's going to be coming back. Am I correct? Is that what we're doing?
Well, we're proving Eddie Manny Creo. Go ahead with the advertisement and trying to get it together.
Absolutely. All righty. Okay, thank you very much. Looking forward. At this point, unless we have any questions, I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting.
Oh, excuse me. So we motioned to.
I made a motion.
Councilmember Susan Rubio made a motion. It was seconded by Councilmember Cruz Baca. This moment, it moves forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. This point, I'm going to move for adjournment of the city council.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. This point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park Housing Authority. And what we have here are the Consent Calendars, which is the item one, Treasury Report. I'll make a motion for approval. Hello?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, at this point, we're adjourning for closed session. Good night.
You were approved. You were approved. I, I know it was confusing.